Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Delta County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's a regular meeting for July fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Please stand and join me in a pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any additions, edits, or agenda this morning?
We will have one addition. Chris Stewart, emergency manager, will provide a fire update to the board.
Ms. Terry, do you have anything? The agenda will stand as amended then. Instituent time, is there anybody in the room like to visit with commissioners this morning? Lindsay, anybody online?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. County clerk, Ms. Stevenson.
Good morning, commissioners. This morning, January fifth, July first, twenty twenty five, Board of County Commissioners regular meeting. Are there any deletions, changes, or additions to this?
Gentlemen?
I have none.
That's good. Thank you, Terry.
Okay, Nick. Chris, why don't you go ahead, then, and provide the update?
Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning. So, quick update. I know I've been sharing updates with you guys since last Thursday. Obviously, the whole western, it feels like the whole western slope's caught on fire since last Thursday, when we had that dry lightning storm come through last Wednesday night and the Thursday morning. And then that's when the fire departments everywhere started chasing smoke reports was last Thursday morning. Just in Delta County alone, last Thursday, we had our fire districts out chasing fires up on Fruitland Mesa. Crawford Fire had at least three different fires on Fruitland Mesa, including some out on BLM land out on Black Ridge, which they were able to get put out. Otherwise, that could have led to a fire on the north rim. Hodgson's Fire went up to one up Larue Creek between Larue Creek and Cedar Ridge. And Payon Fire responded to a fire on Hubbard Creek Road there east of Bowie on BLM land as well. All of our fire districts do a very good job of responding to lightning strikes, initial attack on federal lands in their districts because they don't want to wait for the feds to respond and wait for the fire to get too big and out of control. So, they do a very good job of doing initial attack. So, kudos to all of our volunteer firefighters for the work they did on those. While they were responding all that, then we got reports from Montrose Interagency Dispatch and Wesco Dispatch in Montrose that there was fires on the south rim of the Black Canyon and a small fire on the north rim. They were able to get the north rim fire extinguished Thursday pretty quick. But obviously, as you know, south rim fire at the Black Canyon took off. I think they were hampered in their initial response because of people in the park. They had to evacuate the park before they started firefighting efforts. And by then, it was the heat of the day and it had taken off already, and that's why it's still burning. As of last night, they're reporting the south rim fire is at three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight acres. It was thirty-eight hundred and eighty-seven acres at noon, so it grew a little over two hundred acres yesterday alone. Unfortunately, the weather forecast for this week is not in firefighters' favor. Hot, dry, windy, a hundred-degree temperatures almost every day, low humidity, dry fuels, and afternoon windstorms coming up like we've been experiencing the past two days. It's going to fuel fire behavior overnight on all these fires. There is a complex incident management team managing the south rim fire in Montrose. They do have pretty much all homes south of National Park, all the way to Highway fifty evacuated. Those evacuations remain in place for Montrose, by Montrose County. They are having a community meeting up there tonight at six o'clock for the Montrose County community. We've been, I was asked yesterday to possibly get on a call with incident management team in Montrose County about contingency planning if these winds caused it to spot over onto the north rim because the north rim is our nine-one-one service area and response area for Crawford Fire. And even though that's still Montrose County, those people associate more with Delta County, and it's our resources that are committed. So, I'll be working with them to determine if they're going to move forward with that contingency planning or not. The Sal Belly Fire is the only fire burning in Delta County currently. It's started in Mesa County on the seventh, really had explosive fire growth Thursday afternoon, and it burned Friday into Delta County out there on Escaloni. It's on the Sal Belly Ridge. It started out as the Boys' Fire, then they renamed it in the middle of the night to be the Sal Belly Fire. It's currently at two thousand and twenty-five acres. They actually mapped it yesterday and reduced it by about two hundred acres once they, because the smoke had dissipated. I was looking at the infrared imagery this morning, and the hot spots in that fire have significantly decreased. So, they're getting a handle on that. They still don't have any containment lines around it because of just that rough terrain up there on top of the mesa. They're trying to, they have some masticators that they brought in to cut roads in there to allow firefighters to work. They do have seventy-three firefighters assigned to that fire.
Who's managing that one?
BLM. It's all on BLM land and BLM wilderness currently. They are using a mix of air and ground resources on that fire as well as these other fires. And then yesterday, the Turner Golds fire there in Gateway, Highway one forty-one. That one has really expanded in size. It is now over seven thousand acres this morning. It probably almost quadrupled since noon yesterday. They have mandatory evacuations for, you know, Weave Canyon, all Highway one forty-one outside Gateway. It was like two thousand acres at noon, and it's over seven thousand now. So, that one's exploding. They have a type-one team that took over that one this morning. Probably a lot of the smoke and the ash that's been falling here in Delta is from that fire because it's so rapidly growing, and it's close. There is a small fire up on the Grand Mesa on the, over by Land's End called Indian Peak. It's only six acres, and they have a crew on that. And it's been contained to that six acre, six acres. It hasn't grown, but they're working on full suppression on that to get it declared out. There was two fires that started up there Thursday afternoon as well. Thankfully, they didn't take off. Otherwise, the Mesa would be on fire as well. And then another big plume is the Deer Creek Fire over in Utah, which is over, last I saw, was over ten thousand acres. It's approaching the Montrose Colorado State Line and west end of Montrose there by Paradox. So, and then there's new fires that started yesterday down in the southwest corner by Cortez and stuff. So, fires everywhere. We need, encourage everyone to be extremely cautious with anything that could start a fire and report any new lightning strikes to dispatch immediately so that we can get fire crews on them. Anyway, Sheriff.
The only thing I'd mention is just to remind people that Escaloni Road is closed. I think it's Deer Fort or Deer Creek.
Escaloni Rim Road.
Rim Road. In Escaloni Road, keep people out from that area. I drove down there yesterday morning, went all the way to the, to the forks, and it's super deceiving. You couldn't even tell there was a fire down there. Everything's up on top, and the wind must have been blowing to the, to the northeast or northwest or something because you couldn't even tell there was a fire. Yeah, that's all I have to add.
They were fortunate that one's handling, behaving.
We did have a fire call yesterday with, with the BLM crew on the Sal Valley, and they, they're hoping they can maybe report somewhat of a containment this mornings or this afternoon when we have a call.
Start officially putting some containment on the map. They don't report containment until they dug hand line around the, start digging hand line, and it's cool to the touch, and there's no heat past that. They have a physical barrier in the dirt, so that's what they're out there doing, is cutting hand line to make sure there's no heat before they start marking black on the map to show containment.
Chris, any of your updated emails, you indicated there are crews out along Fruitland and other places doing preemptive spotting work. How many of those crews are out there?
Recognizing the severe resource limitations that we have, not only in pretty much the Montrose Interagency Dispatch Zone, western Colorado, the state, even the nation, Forest Service took the preemptive action of recognizing that the Grand Mesa, Norfolk Valley, all the way up in the Ganniston County, south of Crawford, out there on Black Mesa are all vulnerable if we get these lightning storms. So, they put together a surge task force with US Forest Service engines. BLM, if they get any freed up, they didn't have any immediate free, but they're part of it. And then local cooperators, they put out, they're paying agencies if they have, can commit an engine to the task force to go out and patrol areas that are high-risk starts. And then there'll be the initial attack for wildfires. I believe it's around seven to ten vehicles rotating based on availability. So, they'll be out driving around. They did get ordered up to provide structural protection at the south rim fire. I don't know if they released them back to patrol duty or not until they get some other resources in. But when it started pushing yesterday, Sunday night into Monday, with that wind, they ordered them over there for structure protection in the Boswood Park area. So, just to throw in everything they got, everything around here, but Mother Nature's not making it easy on them.
Are we still under stage one restrictions?
Yes.
Are we planning to go to stage two anytime?
We have another fire meeting or call this afternoon, so I'm seeing, you know, I fully expect federal partners are probably going to want to go to stage two, but we'll find out this afternoon. I'll make sure I pass them along to the board.
Remind us what stage two looks like.
I don't have that in front of me, but like right now, stage one, it's no open burning of fields, ditches, no like wood bonfires or fires and just rocks on the ground or something when you're out camping. But if you have it at your house in a fire pit, that's okay. I believe stage two says no open flame at all, so no backyard barbecues or decorative fire pits or anything like that. No smoking outdoors. It's more restrictive of really discouraging any open flame outside because it's so dry. And I think we're in that, those conditions.
Then stage two also affects like welded dwelling outside.
It does.
Wood cutting, that kind of thing, chainsaws.
Yeah, I have a fire extinguisher with you. They, they do have a fire behavioralist on the south rim fire, and they're using fire modeling from historical data and current data. And they're indicating that there's a potential for extreme fire behavior this week on all these fires because of the drought and low field moistures that they're seeing across western Colorado.
And so far, all lightning caused fires?
All lightning.
Well, Chris, Sheriff, we appreciate the hard work you guys are putting into this. I can imagine what your next week or two is going to look like here, so.
And we've offered assistance to Montrose County. So far, they've said they're good. I'll reach out to Mesa County since they do have significantly more people evacuated and see if Mesa County needs any assistance as well. But for emergency management side, we're all working together to support each other on this because we're all typically one-two-man shops, so we can't do it by ourselves.
We're pretty fortunate right now with our, with Sal Valley, you know, it's in isolated terrain with limited residential area or housing. So, it's burning just in, it sounds like it's approaching the NCA up on top in that, in this area. That can all change with the weather, you know, the high winds we're getting right now. I think we're pretty fortunate, you know, we're in a lot better shape than our counties to the, to the south of us and to the north and west.
Do let us know if there's anything you guys need.
Will do. Yeah, thanks for, thanks for doing that, keeping this updated and everything.
Anything else for Chris, who's Sheriff, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Wish long for tonight, right, with our?
Yes.
You know?
For the work session tonight.
Did that change?
Something changes, but yes.
Hey, next, Carrie Durko, GIS Director, then, for your consideration of a resolution concerning the adoption of revised Delta County standards and policy for road naming and addressing in unincorporated areas. So, Carrie?
Hello, good morning. So, yeah, so here with the new Delta County standards for addressing in unincorporated areas. So, I was here a couple weeks ago with the draft. We had a couple suggestions for changes, and I've made those. So, we are ready for final adoption and signatures. So, I don't know if, I guess, do you guys have any questions about it? Anything that you maybe saw in your review that you want changed?
Questions, comments, commissioners?
I did not see anything that you, we can.
Now, I appreciate you guys updating this for the changes that we had.
Yeah.
And I think you just talked to Roden Bridge.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, I have no questions. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a long time coming to get this to this point. So, I'm happy to get this passed, and we can start referring to this instead of the old one that has been insufficient, so.
What number?
It would be twenty-two.
Why move that we adopt a resolution number twenty-two five R dash twenty-two, a resolution concerning adoption of the revised Delta County standards and policy for road naming and addressing in unincorporated areas?
I will second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done. Thank you, Carrie.
Sure. Thank you.
Who has got the original?
Thank you.
Okay, next, for your consideration, then, the presentation, County Treasurer Lisa DeFolio with the semi-annual report.
Already semi-annual.
Already. It's flying. Good morning, commissioners. Robbie. Presenting the semi-annual report covering the period of January first, twenty twenty-five through six-thirty, twenty twenty-five for approval for publication. Just wanted to point out a couple of changes with the ending balance in the twelve-thirty-one, twenty twenty-four due to year-end adjustments. The first one affects the general fund, which is on page one, first item zero-zero-one-zero. It was increased by three hundred and sixty dollars and seventy cents. While on page two, fund number zero-nine-two-zero, which is city lien fees, was brought to zero with that year-end adjustment.
What was that second one, Lisa?
Zero-nine-two-zero, which is city lien fees. So, if you're comparing that to the ending balances of the twelve-thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, you'll see that variation. The second adjustment for year-end adjustments was done between the, both of these accounts on page one, Fund two-seven-zero for Delta County Health and Fund two-seven-five for Delta, or Health Department Federal Funds. The federal funds in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine sixty-eight thirteen were transferred and combined with the Delta County Health Fund, increasing that balance to the nine fifty-one, five eighty-three, eighty-seven, and showing the two-seven-five fund to be zero. The last change that you'll see is on page two when compared to the twelve-thirty-one, twenty twenty-four semi-annual. It was reflecting a balance of ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight, sixty-seven. Those are prepaid taxes. Therefore, that balance, as a starting balance on the semi-annual that you're looking at now, is reflecting a zero because those taxes were applied. And since that isn't a transfer, it does change the ending balance from the reflected balance on the twenty-twenty-four ending semi-annual. Brings that down to the twenty-five thousand, five eighty-five, nine thirty-two, fifteen.
Any questions for Lisa on this?
I have none.
Okay. And the last thing I wanted to point out is the funds beginning on page one, Fund three-three-zero for County Library, all the way through Fund zero-eight-five-zero for the fire protection. That's a total of a million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, nine ninety-sixty-two. All of those funds were disbursed to the taxing authorities by the July tenth deadline, so.
Okay. What was that ending? You started with library. What was the ending on that one?
That is the zero-eight-fifty for Fire District Five. Any other questions?
Anything else for Lisa?
No, nothing.
Thank you for sharing this.
All right. We'll get that published. Thank you so much.
Thank you, babe.
Moved or ratify warrants. I anticipate that Matt will be here to discuss the Housing and Plant Grant Resolution. So, we'll move to ratify warrants, please.
You got this one, Mike?
Yeah, getting her file opened here.
Number three, that might be.
I move that we ratify the warrants to the various funds paid by warrant numbers one-five-four-seven-seven-three through one-five-five-zero-four-four and ACH transactions one-one-one-six-dash-eleven-forty-three from June first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, holding one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents in accounts payable and one million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents in monthly county human services and health department, June twenty-twenty-five payroll for items budgeted and approved per Delta County policy.
I will second that motion. Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done.
Okay, moving back to the Housing and Planning Grant Resolution. This is a meeting that Commissioner Fuller attended with the town of Cedar Ridge and Orchard City. And they are jointly moving forward with a grant submission to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Housing Planning Grant Program. And this grant then will be to plan and the strategic growth of that comprehensive plan. This will build on what the county has already studied with Contour, where they identified the eight parcels that have the potential for housing as well as for the change in the land use code with the accessory dwelling units. So, again, this resolution is just approving matching funds to support the multi-jurisdictional funding proposal submission to DOLA from the town of Orchard City, from Orchard City, from the town of Cedar Ridge, and Delta County jointly. Commissioner Fuller, I don't know if you want to add anything. This would be an additional resolution. We are waiting on one amount from the town of Cedar Ridge, and then County Attorney John Baer will be able to finalize this resolution.
No, I think you pretty much hit on everything. It goes back to a legislation that came through in twenty twenty-three, and so this is kind of beginning the implementation of that. And like she said, we're, we're joining forces with Cedar Edge and Orchard City in a grant application. Matching funds divided by three between the three entities, and then the balance to be pursued through a DOLA grant. And Dana is confident that that will be available in one form or another to proceed. And if it's not, then this, this goes nowhere, so. And that amount was, I believe, was twenty thousand per entity maximum. Could come in significantly less than that depending on what the grants come in at, so.
Okay.
Got any further questions? We can discuss that, or we can move forward.
Wait till we get a formal resolution here before we make any real action items here?
Well, we do. You could authorize that a resolution is signed. This grant is on a tight timeline.
Commissioner Fuller, would you like to lead us on this one this year?
I don't have a, we have a resolution number. It would be twenty-three. I move that we approve resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-three between the city of Cedar Edge, Orchard City, and the county. Resolution approving matching funds to support a multi-jurisdictional funding proposal submission to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Housing Planning Grant Program for a assessment, action, comprehensive plan. And we'll fill in those blanks when they become available.
I second that.
I would like to amend that this is not to exceed a maximum twenty thousand.
I will, I will take that. Yes, maximum twenty thousand dollars per entity.
Per entity. I second that amendment.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done.
Okay, next will be a review of your schedule with Lindsay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Today, three-thirty, Florida Health, sixty-dollar street. Five-thirty to seven, you have a work session, Urban Interprese Code, Fire Districts, three coming up West Street. July sixteenth, nine to one-thirty, AGNC and Board Meeting. Tuesday, July twenty-second, nine to eleven a.m., Fair Go Training for Capital, Carify sixty-dollar street. Thursday, July twenty-fourth, nine-thirty to ten-thirty, Representative Soper, live presentation, two-eleven West Street. Thursday, July twenty-fourth.
Back up to that one again?
Sure. Thursday, July twenty-fourth, nine-thirty to ten-thirty, Representative Soper, live presentation. Have it at two-eleven West Sixth Street.
Sheriff's Office. Will either of you be able to attend that?
I will.
Okay, yeah.
I have a CPW meeting that day.
Thursday, July twenty-fourth, twelve to two-thirty, R-ten Board Executive Committee, Belt Playing Room, slash Zoom. July twenty-sixth through August third is the Delta County Fair, the Fairgrounds of the Logist. Monday, July twenty-eighth, nine to twelve, Fair Go Training for Operations on Personnel. That's at three-twenty West Fifth Street. Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, eight-thirty. Thursday, July twenty-ninth, eight-thirty a.m. Thursday, July twenty-ninth, eight-thirty A.M. to noon, Florida County Commissioners Meeting here at five sixty-dollar street. Wednesday, July thirtieth, six to eight P.M. is Community Night at the Fair. That's at the Fairgrounds in Monarchus. That is a barbecue for the community. Everybody is welcome, and the commissioners will be booking. Make sure you join us for that. That is all I have for today.
Any other additions to our schedule?
I have none.
Thank you, Lindsay. Robbie, anything else for Commissioner Business this morning?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Business is done. We are going to recess till nine o'clock. We'll pick up with Human Services and Eglago Center team. That clock is way off.
The battery will.
Twelve. Nine o'clock. How are you guys today?
Good, good, good morning. All right, so we will start with the financials as usual.
All right, I just gave the payable report to Robbie. The only thing to note is there was a lot of travel for training conferences and a language justice training. I didn't know if you wanted to talk anything about that with the pay for through a grant.
So we received support to host a language justice training for individuals with bilingual specialty in Spanish. And so they learn translation and they receive a certification. That is a professional development. And so it was open to other employees in the county as well as other community members as well. So it was a two-and-a-half-day training, I believe, and Friday and Saturday, and they would hear, and were able to receive that certification.
I don't know what language justice means.
So for example, just because you may speak another language doesn't mean that you have the specialty in translating specifically in a legal realm or in a professional capacity. And so it allows that to be a certification for professional development.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fuller, Andy, on the financials?
I have none.
It's an action item.
I will make a motion that we accept the financials from the Human Services Department. An authorized chair to sign.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slow down. Thank you, Nicole.
And then I do have a little summary of the allocation change for this year. There's a couple, like, chiefy that's still waiting and leaves for the federal year, but it does summarize the comparison, five percent in amount between last year and this year.
Anything in particular you want us to note on this one that's concerning to you, Nicole?
Now that I've been on a couple of allocation committees, I'm learning a lot about the equations. The learning that our allocations are, some of them have gone down, but it's not necessarily the equation, but the amount of funds coming into the program as a whole. That's not showing what the program actually needs to be sustained. So that's interesting, and it kind of reflects in why we were expecting to get a little bit more in our allocation, but the overall amount that we're, like, they mediated between the programs. When they were broken up between the counties, the number wasn't as high as a lot of the committees thought it was going to be. So I think for child welfare, we thought we may get one-point-two-million increase, and we actually got a twelve-thousand-dollar decrease.
From a one-point-two-million increase, you had a twelve-thousand-dollar decrease.
Yep, yes.
And same with Tana. Almost forty thousand decrease.
Yes, we always get, it looks like, about a five percent decrease on our allocation when we don't spend up to a certain amount.
Yeah.
Any questions for Nicole on the allocation? And this is through?
Oh, just for next year's allocation versus this year?
Any chance any of these will change from this point?
I don't know.
No.
We hope. Thank you.
I think it's frustrating knowing what we spend in child welfare allocation and how we go over traditionally every year. And so we were really looking forward to that, and it didn't happen. So, it's rough.
APS did get a little increase. I was on that allocation task committee, and they did put in a floor, which we weren't expecting because we should have gotten a little bit more, but they put in a five percent floor to save the big cuts from other counties. So I thought that was interesting, how they decided that.
Any explanation from the state on the cuts, or just?
The biggest explanation is, one, their own budget, but, two, they have not done well in drawing down federal 4E funds. And so because that drawdown from the state is lacking, that's passed on to the counties for not enough reimbursement. So important to capture our 4E monies when we can.
And I noticed an increase in not, not as many cases on our side being eligible because I believe the income level isn't changing to reflect current. It's still, like, in the past, so it's not as high as it should be. It's not going up with, like, inflation, if that's right. So it's not reflecting current time. It's still in the past. And I think they try and change it, but it's a lot of people that need to change it through that and states.
All right, next up, we have self-sufficiency. One of the things that we are working towards is meeting with our local childcare partners and our LCO to try and build out and expand our childcare options. We know with the potential for, well, not the potential, but the incoming Medicaid work requirements, it's going to require eighty hours of work time prior to applications. And so families are going to need childcare availabilities. And so we're working to expand homes there. And we just recently learned of, I think, like, seventeen slots in a childcare center in Cedar Edge, which has applied to become a CCAP provider and then one local individual as well. So we're just trying to expand the opportunities for families in that program. And the next one is an action item, and that is our Medicaid Incentives Contract. So this is the contract we engage with the state every year. And they, last year was based on a survey and increasing the amount of people that responded to your survey to look at, were you treated with respect? Was your service timely? Those types of things and accuracy. And so they have continued that same performance incentive standard and added another one, which is a collaboration incentive with hospitals. And so this will require counties to have a type of collaboration agreement with how to expedite applications for individuals in the hospital and help with eligibility. One of those things that already will help is that on July first, the hospital can become an MA site, which means that they can determine some presumptive eligibility. And so the hospital may have a meeting in the next month or so to get the ball rolling to see if that's an option for them to help those in all areas of need, which could include potentially behavioral health transport, which we've been talking about. So, yeah, so we're looking to expand the hospital's capacity to do that, and as a part of that, we'll meet that incentive. So the contract is like fifty-seven pages long, but I did just, I included all of it in the packet. I did bring the cover page, but it actually is a docu-sign. So once the action item is approved, then it will become a docu-sign that I would assign to the chair, Wendell, for you to sign.
Do you anticipate any staffing change with this, Granny?
We don't. We receive this one every year. It actually does help support our staffing and helps support some of our overtime that we've done in order to meet our measures. So it backfills us a little bit. We made and met all of our performance incentives for this last year. We just received that report last week, and I think that was at sixty-six thousand or sixty-two thousand, or a little bit decreased to the fifty-seven, but.
You don't anticipate that the hospital would say, we need you all up here?
So as part of that, actually, there are three hospitals right now that are piloting that they are an actual human services-trained employee, but housed in the hospital and paid by the hospital. So there is opportunities for us to do that, but it requires, it doesn't have a shared cost. It just, it would be a hospital employee, but they would be trained by us.
Okay, so that would not be a shared employee that?
Right, that's how they're doing it right now. And that's a part of the collaboration incentive that they're asking for is what does that look like? Because for some areas, it's not possible for them to add a staff member. So they have left it really broad of what is it that your area actually needs in order to meet the incentive, but also really help ensure that individuals are getting connected to services sooner.
Any other questions on this contract? You said last year was how much?
I think it was sixty-two thousand that we received, or sixty-six.
This year it's fifty-seven?
Yes.
Fifty-seven thousand this year?
That's what we receive if we make all measures. So we have to make sure that we meet all measures of the contract.
Go ahead, then.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Medicaid incentive contract between the State of Colorado Department of Healthcare Policy and Financing in Delta County.
I second that. And authorize the chair to sign?
And authorize the chair to sign.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slow down.
So I'll send that over this afternoon.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there anything else you wanted to add for self-sufficiency?
Just based on, we went through our management evaluation review with the state on the Adult Financial and Colorado Works Programs. And they did an overall questionnaire of like seventy-six questions of our processes, procedures, and how we do business within the county. Overall, I think we did fairly well. There were a few audit procedures that I think we have to fine-tune a little bit, and then there's some reports that they want us to work a little bit more diligently on that I think overall it went pretty good. So we're waiting for the final report.
You never know. It'll be on the report.
Right.
We're hoping for minimal cure items, so.
Well, now you got to be held up to your standards from the award that you got last week, you know?
I know. And we have another audit coming in that program area as well. So we're getting hit with two on the self-sufficiency side this year.
We are still down for eligibility.
Any other open positions for eligibility?
So we actually filled the child support position with someone who came to us from eligibility, but we will have open positions. We do have open positions in other program areas, which we're going to talk about in just a minute. So Adult and Family Services. So that is part of one of the main updates, is that we are seeing some turnover in staff. Just life for people, life happens. And so we are working towards some recruitment and retention strategies. We received a report from Colorado State University, just finished their, it was a workload study that they had done regarding recruitment and retention. It took about two years to complete, but they completed it with some recommendations and things like that. So we sent those off to look at. And then we have some secondary trauma trainings that we have sent out. One was last month. The next one is at the hospital that they are providing it free for any healthcare-related positions to attend. So we're hoping to encourage staff to do that. And then I will say in adult protection, they are fully staffed now, and so that has been helpful. They also celebrated World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. They all wore purple and went and delivered baskets to different department heads and nursing homes and things like that to provide just more awareness. And we're hoping that we can work with Region Ten next year to do a bigger event to cover more counties and just bring more awareness. And then anything else you'd like to add?
No, I mean, we do have the three open positions in child welfare right now, but I'm confident we'll get two of those filled pretty quickly, and we'll be moving on the third one here soon, too. So hopefully, we'll be staffed up soon.
You know, be fully staffed before school starts.
Yes, when our referrals double in numbers.
Schools are clear to the end of the summer, though. March away.
August eleventh. Earlier and earlier.
So, but that's all we have today. Thank you for coming and supporting our distinguished performance award. I think that was nice for the staff and the state to be there as well. We'll have some recognitions for another program area next month as well, and we'll bring those staff up to the meeting.
Well, thank you should go your way because you're the one that do the work.
Our staff works really hard.
The short of meat and dough, and so.
Thank you. We'll pass that on. All right.
Thank you. Make sure that contract gets to me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Enjoy the rest.
Get to the jail recording. I have two jail reports this week. Delta County Detention Facility Population Count report for Monday, July seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Male inmates, county jail, twenty-seven. Female inmates, county jail, six. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, one. Female inmates, Department of Corrections, two. Total thirty-six. Average daily inmate population for the week of July one through July seven, twenty-twenty-five was forty-eight point seven-seven. The detention facility population count report for July fourteen, twenty-twenty-five. Male inmates, county jail, twenty-eight. Female inmates, county jail, five. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, one. Female inmates, Department of Corrections, one. Total thirty-five. Average daily inmate population for the week of July seven through July fourteen, twenty-twenty-five was forty-four point one-one. Is there anything else come for the board before planning?
Not at this time.
Hearing nothing, we will recess until ten A.M. Well, it is ten A.M. We're going to come back on record from Delta County Board of Commissioners, fifteen, July twenty-twenty-five. It's time for planning. I will turn this over to Mr. Gardner. Good morning.
Good morning. First item on the agenda was to do with natural medicine, natural medicine business amendment. I'm not exactly clear of what you would like to accomplish with that. I just wanted to know what the PC's feedback was on the, on the recommended changes to the amendment?
Correct. Have they had a chance to review that?
They did, and they provided some feedback. With regard to, I can go through some of those points that you had laid out.
The hours of operation was the last one that we were really concerned with, unless they had other comments, edits we need to know about?
The PC mostly didn't, didn't agree with setting hours because they don't think that one should be regular, essentially.
And the reasoning behind that?
That they weren't enough familiar with the practice of healing centers to necessarily put that requirement on, you know, how their operation functions.
Okay. Any other comments on the other?
They have no problem with the additional definitions that were added for Healing Center and Natural Medicine. And then also with regard to all natural medicine business licensees shall report every adverse health event to planning. They had questions about whether or not that would be in conflict with HIPAA rules. But we, I remember we ensured them that that wasn't, we didn't need to know the details just that they had occurred. And that there is a, there is a requirement that healing centers need to report to the licensing agency when there are events. And so we're not sure just logistically how the event reporting would get back to us. So there are questions. There were more questions about that, that proposal than there were necessarily any kind of conclusion from the PC about it. And then the other point was about hardwired communication. They thought that redundant communication would better substitute. I think that is all the points that the commissioners had suggested as changes to those amendments. And that was the feedback from the PC on those.
Okay. Any questions for Sean? What I'm going to do next, we've got Mrs. Sorensen would like to visit with us on this topic here, so. Good morning. We've got three minutes here. Please introduce yourself where you live and give us.
My name is Debbie Sorensen. I'm on with Lindsay Gardens. I am a trauma survivor in both physical and emotional abuse. I am a trauma survivor in both physical and emotional abuse. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the effects of psilocybin, and I have our take in that.
Mrs. Sorenson, you realize we do not regulate the effects.
Let me speak, you're taking up my time, okay?
I just wanna make sure it's pertinent to what we're doing here.
All right.
Very good.
So regarding the journey, it is done at nine AM in the morning. You take the medicine, you lay on a bed, you have a facilitator with you in the room. I cried for four and a half hours, this is not a party scene. This is releasing emotional trauma stuck at a cellular level in your body. After this happens, you sit with your, the person who is the facilitator, and you talk about what has come up. I've done years and years and years of counseling, almost eight years of counseling. Both, anyway, it doesn't matter. But what I, what I wanna say is, I hope that you guys support this because it is, it is incredible what a difference it has made in my life. And people who have been in wars or have experienced extreme trauma, it can, it can help them. It can help them have a normal life, and I'm hoping that, that Delta County will support that. It isn't a party scene, Mr. Lane, it isn't, this, we're talking about medicinal, we're not talking about recreational use. This is something that can help people heal and become stronger people. It takes less resources to support them emotionally if they, if, if they're in a hospital setting, or if they're, have some type of trauma. This can really help them become whole human beings, and I hope that you will support this. And, you know, I, I know there's rules and regulations, but I hope that you will work with the community of facilitators. And make this prominent in our, in Delta County, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for being here today. Would anybody else like to visit with commissioners on this topic? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close that part. Sean, anything else on planning on this? Commissioners, any comments, thoughts here, or I make a recommendation?
Nothing.
So, so Commissioner might remind you, a couple of matters. One is the board will remember that we're in a moratorium that runs through October first, two thousand twenty-five.
Correct.
Secondly, from a procedural standpoint. I don't know what the board is intending on how they're proceeding. One way to proceed would be to ask the planning commission to propose, to re-propose some language. It's been since March since they sent the language out, so, so. One option would be to ask the planning commission to propose new language based upon the conversations that have been had, including today. The other option would be for the board itself, the work session or whatever. To put together, to put together a language they'd like to see, and then that has to go to the PC. Both, both boards have to kind of look at it.
Well, this is an amendment to the land use code.
Yes, it is.
Yes, so what I was gonna ask Mr. Gardner to do was provide some draft language. Get in front of the next PC meeting and bring it back to the board by the end of July, or by, excuse me, by the end of August. Is that feasible for you, Sean?
Yes.
I appreciate you doing that, let me know if you need any, any other direction there on that. Go back to you, Sean.
All right. Next project is SD zero-nine dash zero-zero-one. D E R T Property Management LLC, the new owners of the property. That the specific development agreement SD zero-nine zero-zero-one is with that property. And so we are doing, we're asking you to consider amendment to the specific development agreement. To update the ownership and also the legal description of the property. The subject property is six and a quarter acres. It is at the address of one eight four three six F Road, about a mile and a half east of Delta. And has been identified as lot two of the Wild Horse Acres subdivision. Parcel number thirty-four fifty-five, twenty-eight twenty-one, five zero zero two. And it has a specific development agreement, SD zero-nine zero-zero-one that runs with the land. The owners, the current owners now, who are owners as of May twenty-four. And their realtors and their title company communicated several times with the planning department prior to buying the property to ensure that operation. That they intended to conduct on the property would not require a rezoning. And that they could operate under the existing specific development agreement. Staff at that time assured the property, that the property would not need to be rezoned, that new, that no new application or agreement would be needed. As long as their operation complies with the activity specified in condition number eleven of the specific development agreement. And resulted in no new specific or significant impacts. Staff also advised that if commercial uses were going to continue, to be continued on the property, that the development agreement should be updated. To reflect the new ownership and the appropriate lot number. Since the property had been subdivided and replatted numerous times since the issuance of the agreement. So staff analyzed the agreement concluded, and all the, all the plats, and concluded that the property is now identified as lot two. They're shown in red of the Wild Horse Acres subdivision. Like I said, the new owners, D E R T Property Management, also. Known as Western Skyways, they're the property management company for Western Skyways, to be the operation occupying the facility. Imperatively analyzed this specific development agreement and concluded from their own assessment. That their operation is in alignment with the existing conditions of approval. And that their operation will not differ in its compliance in any way from the prior permittee that occupied the property. Furthermore, they proposed no changes to the site plan or to the conditions of approval. Eric Barker, the president of Western Skyways, who is here with us today, provided the requested information. I requested that you give a detailed explanation of their operations and to explain how they were gonna, what kind of activity. They were gonna conduct on the property, the hours of operation, and so forth. And they provided that in the sound report. It explains again their operational activities, hours of operation, anticipated traffic, and expected external impact. After reviewing that information, staff also concluded they could remain within the conditions of the existing. Specific development agreement, therefore recommends that commissioners adopt a resolution amending the specific development agreement. SD zero-nine zero-zero-one to reflect the correct legal property description and new, new ownership of the property. As D E R T Property Management LLC, finding that lot two of the Wild Horse Acres subdivision. With the address of eighteen four thirty-six F Road is the subject parcel of SD zero-nine zero-zero-one.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions or comments for Sean?
Not at this point.
Yeah, thanks for all the hard work in assembling this together in a, in a timely manner and, and getting all the. Information together in one positive for us to review, thank you.
And the, the owner is here, Mr. Barker, did you have anything else to add?
No, I believe he captured everything this time.
Thank you. Well, it'd be my recommendation to the commissioners.
You need to ask if there's any.
Oh, excuse me, is there anybody in the audience who would like to make comment on this proposed resolution? Adopting the recommendations of the planning department? Anybody online, Lindsay?
Does anybody online have any comments? No.
Thank you. Twenty-four.
Why move that the board approved the resolution number twenty twenty-five R dash twenty-four? A resolution amending specific development agreement, SD zero-nine dash zero-zero-one.
I will second the motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a, an original resolution?
Yes, we do.
Do you wanna sign it now or after? Thank you. Go ahead, Sean.
Next project is project twenty-four dash zero-five-seven Davis, to consider conditional use permit for an event venue. The Davis application was received August fifth last year, so it's coming up on eleven months ago. This classifies it as an event venue in our land use code, which is, requires a limited use permit notice. The Davises have been complying with all the requirements to get the permit, and it has been the view of staff. That this project aligns with the two thousand eighteen master plan and meets the standards of the land use code. However, I elevated it to a conditional use permit on May twenty-seventh this year because the public, because of many public comments and opposition to the venue. That were alleging that it does not meet the, it doesn't align with the master plan or meet the land use code standards. And that it may have material impacts on neighboring properties or public resources that are unusual and kind of green. In the unusual context of the subject property, which is one of the conditions for elevating it to conditional use. So the application's been largely completed for a while, but has been delayed the last several months as we've awaited. The determination of whether or not a C dot access permit would be required at a highway ninety-two intersection. Which it will be, we'll talk about that in a second. The property is, is on a nineteen point four acre parcel, approximately a mile southwest of Hockus. In eight-twenty zone. This here is the site plan, there's an existing single-family residence at thirty-three zero eight four J Road. Access to that residence is from J Road on the west side, they have existing septic system there for that, that house. And Rogers Mesa Domestic Water Company tap. The venue is in the colored area there to, that you see the barn, you can see. The green dots around the edge and so forth, all that is like a burn with some landscaping. They have a pending septic permit for the barn, pending the approval of this venue. They have approval from Rogers Mesa to use the existing tap that they have for the residence for the barn venue. They've been working with county engineering on the access for the barn, which is to the north of Hockus Road. The barn is approximately a hundred and two feet by eighty-six feet, so it's eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-two square feet. Included in the barn is a, is a, is a covered patio area on the outside. With entrance and exit sites on the south, east, and north. Those are marked in red up there if you can see that. Inside, there's gonna be two like get ready rooms for wedding parties, restrooms, there'd be a food prep area with a sink fridge. And, but there's no cooking that would be going on there. And there's a bar staging area, but alcohol will not be provided by the owner, but by the venue renter. And then the parking lot is there in white. It's two hundred and fifty-five feet by sixty-seven feet, about thirty-four or thirty-five thousand square feet. Ninety-three parking spots total with five ADA parking spots. The applicant, since the planning commission hearing have, have provided a new site plan with a couple of. A couple of changes that came as a result of just on field work on site. Instead of diverting the irrigation water that comes into the northwest corner of the property from a culvert under J Road. Instead of running it under the parking lot to the pond that you see drawn there. They will be directing the irrigation water around the west and then the south side of the parking lot to the pond. It's hard to see on there, but they also added a, a light mitigation fence on the west side of the parking lot. To prevent headlights from shining into neighbors' homes across J Road to the west. Let's see, let's go ahead to the business plans. The business plan states that the venue will be available to rent three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven days a week. Hours of operation be from nine AM to ten PM. Max capacity would be a hundred and twenty people, goal is to eventually host fifty events in a calendar year. Music will be limited to inside the venue, and there will be no overnight accommodations provided at the venue. In terms of their irrigation and agricultural plan. Approximately fourteen point three acres of the nineteen point four acres will remain for agricultural purposes. It's in the light green area, and. Irrigation water will remain unchanged in the agricultural area, and again, the wastewater, I explained how that would be diverted from under J Road. With regards to noise abatement. For noise mitigation plans, this is an aerial view of approximate distances to surrounding houses. That range from, you know, anywhere from five hundred feet to nine hundred and sixty feet. From the, the barn. Sorry, can you go back? So again, the yellow striped areas with the green dots show where the applicant intends to put in burns. Landscaping to also help with some noise mitigation, that'll be on the north side, south and west sides of the property. And the business plan states that they will keep music inside and that noise will remain below the fifty-five decibels measured at property lines following state statute. With regard to their fire emergency plan, they, the discouraged use of hay and straw bales in the venue. Discouraged use of fireworks in or around the venue. Address signs of the venue address will be located inside the building and in a viewable location outside the venue. Two panic doors located at the front of the venue and at the back of the barn with lighted exit signs above the doors. They'll have fire hydrant, which will be located at the corner of the property, or there is a fire hydrant, sorry, at, at the corner of the property. They'll have fire extinguishers located within the, the venue. And then the two staircases coming down from the balcony area. Are recommended as opposed to one, so that there's a, a way to get out of the balcony area in case of a, a fire. A first aid kit and AED machine will be purchased and placed in the venue. And all of these plans have been reviewed and agreed upon with the Hockus Fire Chief. A letter to that effect on, from June sixteenth. Regarding the traffic study, a memo is in your packet from Turnkey Consulting LLC addressing neighbor traffic and road concerns. In summary, the, the inbound peak hours are calculated to be at the peak hours of the day. For the intersection is under consideration at Highway ninety-two, and it's the hour right before any event would occur. And it's calculated to be forty-eight vehicle trips within that hour, which equates to about one new car every. One point twenty-five minutes. C dot has determined that this venue will impact the, the intersection of Highway ninety-two and J eighty Road. The county's met with C dot several times about this matter, and it's been recommended that an eastbound right turn deceleration lane. Be constructed at Highway ninety-two and J eighty. C dot has verbally agreed to this. C dot has verbally agreed to this conclusion, and they will formally agree when we review the report and issue the C dot access permit. It appears there's plenty of existing highway right-of-way that will start the lane. Final highway design would be necessary to confirm this, but minor adjustments to various geometric design factors could be considered to keep the construction in the necessary right-of-way and avoid the need for acquisition of private property. Condition number six in the proposed conditions of approval requires the applicant to provide the county with a copy of the finalized Highway ninety-two C dot access permit. All I have remaining pretty much is the conditions of approval, so if you'd like, we can go through those one by one. Would you like to do that? Condition number one. Project twenty-four zero-five-seven is approved for an event venue that can host up to fifty events in one calendar year with the max capacity being one hundred and twenty people, the property located at thirty-three zero-eight-four J Road. Operations shall be in accordance with the approved plans and supplemental documentation to Director of Community Development, including, but not limited to, the business plans, site plan, irrigation plan, and noise plan, and the fire emergency plan. Any significant modification shall require an amendment to be considered by the planning commission and Board of County Commissioners. Number two. Plans identified through the Colorado Noxious Sweet Act and the Delta County Noxious Sweet List as undesirable and designated for management within the county shall be removed. Three. Operations shall take place on the property from nine A M. to ten P M. Monday through Sunday throughout the year. Number four. Outdoor lighting shall be hooded or shielded at all so as to not cast light or glare into adjacent properties or upwards in a manner that dilutes the sky. Number five. The operation shall not exceed noise thresholds set by statute cited. Maximum permissible noise levels, which limits commercial use to a sound level of sixty decibels during the hours of seven A M. to seven P M. Fifty-five decibels during the hours of seven P M. to seven A M. At twenty-five feet from the property boundary. The owner shall maintain a decibel log or noise mitigation record that is approved by county planning. That last uh, sentence is something that we added subsequent to the P C hearing as a means of actually verifying that that's picked up. Number six. An access permit at Highway ninety-two will be required from the C D Colorado Department of Transportation for the development. Prior to operations, the applicant shall provide the county with a copy of the finalized C dot access permit. Number seven. Prior to operations, the applicant shall obtain final approval on an engineered onsite wastewater treatment system permit for the event venue. Number eight. Prior to operations, the applicant shall obtain approval from the county engineer for the venue access. Number nine. Prior to operations, the applicant shall obtain site construction approval according to the final approved site plan. Number ten. And all the rest of these are all um added have been added since the P C hearing, either by staff or by P C. Number ten, the owner shall submit an annual report to the county by January fifteenth of each year to include the number of events held, number of attendees, review uh, the decibel logs, responses to any complaints, any proposed changes to operations or site plans to ensure compliance with the permit. This will also include an annual site visit to review the property and conditions of the permit issued. Number eleven. Prior to operations, the applicant shall screen the west side of the parking lot to help mitigate a headlight shining into neighborhood homes. Number twelve. Use of fireworks is prohibited at the location of the all that the business plan said that uh, they're going to recommend that, but the P C had more certainty that those people are hidden. Number thirteen. Events located at the on the subject property are restricted to the hours of nine A M. to ten P M. This um, this condition is really already a part of the business plan. It's exactly what's stated in the business plan is their hours, so it's redundant. Number fourteen. A modification of the current business plan that would include language regarding a responsible driver for intoxicated or impaired guests. Number fifteen, all barn doors for the event venue shall be closed after seven P M. Number sixteen. The event venue shall not allow hard liquor twenty percent or more approved. So with that um staff and planning commission recommend that commissioners find the project twenty-four fifty-seven Davis complies with land use code or event venue requiring conditional use permit and approve project twenty-four seven Davis a conditional use permit for the event venue located at thirty-three eighty-four J Road, Hotchkiss, subject to conditions.
Thank you, Sean. Have a good, good presentation there. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Gardner?
Who will make the annual site visit?
Both compliance officers.
And on the decibel log, noise, always mitigation record, is that to be done daily, weekly? How will that?
At the events, at the time of
At the time of events?
Yeah.
At pre-approved locations?
Well, the details are to be worked out, and they have to, the plan of how to do that has to be approved by the planning department.
Okay.
On a on that number, proposed number five. Maybe it's obvious to everyone else, but um, twenty-five feet from the property boundary. What side is that? What side is the property boundary?
That's why I was asking.
Right, okay. So what is the recommendation?
I I believe, I mean, it takes an interpretation and state statute, because that's how it states it, but I believe the intent is ask the the property venue outside of the property on which the business is occurring.
But these property owners aren't going to have the right to go onto other property unless without without being permissioned.
In that regard, let's be very specific about those locations where the decibels.
All right. J Road does border the north and the west, and so just on the other side of the area, I suppose would be about twenty-five feet from the port.
And your recommendation is as the statute describes it? Okay, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Okay, it's it's a question that's come up in conversation among us two to talk on because it's not very clear.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts, commissioners? We're going to open this up for a public hearing. I've got a list here. I think we got a few more that signed up. When I call your name, if you'd like to speak, let us know. Oh, certainly.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. and Mrs. Davis, do you have anything else to add to what Sean has presented here this morning?
Yes, sir.
Please join us, introduce yourself, where you live.
Hello, my name is Ken Davis. It's been long, long coming uh, meeting, and I appreciate your time. Uh, I just have a few things that I'd like to say, uh, that a lot of things have been posted online that are incorrect, and uh, I'd like to address some of it. And basically uh, highlight some of it, it's already been covered, but this is a wholesome family-owned business from Colorado family that's uh, we've been, our wife grew up in Color- Colorado, was born here. I I spent the majority of my life in Montrose, and we decided to move up to Hotchkiss because uh, Montrose just got to be way too busy for us. Uh, this is a totally wholesome business. It's not a party barn, not a brothel, not a strip club. Want to be clear about that. It will benefit many of the businesses, including caterers, florists, restaurants, hotels, gas stations, galleries, and gift shops, and even realtors will benefit. The barn size eighty-seven hundred and seventy-two feet. Twelve hundred of that is covered seating. There will be no onsite kitchen. There will be no camping. Uh, it's approximately a twenty-acre property with uh, the venue will cover about three acres of it. Seventeen acres are still being farmed by the same fellow that was uh, farming it before. Um, our max capacity is a hundred and twenty guests, fifty events per year. It's unlikely that we would have that many, but this is a goal. Um, we have spaces for ninety-three cars in the parking lot, but that doesn't mean they'll all be used. Better to have more than uh, more than enough. Alcohol, uh, the renter will uh, they may serve beer and wine only. If the alcohol served is served, the renter is required to have a licensed bartender to check I D.'s and restrict underage drinking. Uh, we require the renter provide a shuttle service if needed. Uh, all guests also do have a personal responsibility as they would anywhere else in the state of Colorado, and designated drivers are recommended. Uh, water for the venue, the guest bathrooms, and a sink in the caterer staging area. Prep area is the only water we'll be using. Uh, the wastewater still enters the property at the same place as it did before. Uh, we just rerouted it around the uh, where the parking lot will be. Uh, we're going to retain it, uh, just, we have a pond that will hold water for the sprinkler systems to uh, take care of the grass and the trees and shrubs that we planted, and then it will exit out the same place that it did before. Uh, the pond does meet the guidelines set by the state water resources. Uh, noise, we're uh, all the speakers will be indoors. Uh, we're going to try to do the best we can with trees, shrubs, fence, whatever we have to do to keep the noise down. Uh, I'm sorry, do I still have time?
Go ahead, appear on the screen.
Uh, eliminate what's uh, uh, also, I did visit the sheriff's department. They told me they have never had any noise or rowdy complaints for wedding venues in the past. Uh, dust, uh, there will be no bare dirt. Parking lot will be either gravel or uh, um, asphalt, um, recovered asphalt. I don't know what you want to say, but uh, there will be no dust. Um, headlights, we will be putting up a light screen to uh, appease the neighbor that uh, there may be light shining on our house. Uh, people have complained about dangerous roads, same roads as there's always been. Highway ninety-two has four ninety-degree turns from Highway ninety-two to the property. And uh, uh, speed limit is thirty-five, same as it's always been. And for the turns, there are speed limit signs that are twenty mile an hour for those turns. People should be able to navigate the turns. Someone has spoken, said the uh, we're eliminating natural wetlands. That is false. That own previous owner had flood irrigated that lot uh, where I had grooves in the uh, dirt to irrigate. We are just eliminating that. Uh, see, property values will drop. That we believe is a total speculation. We believe is untrue. Wildlife will leave. We believe that is totally untrue. Uh, someone has claimed that we advertise that bring your own liquor. Totally false, a lie. We do not. There are several other claims, but we feel they weren't worth addressing. Or uh, basically, they weren't anyone's business but our own. So uh, that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. After the public comment period, we may ask you to come back up to address any issues that could arise.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, we're going to open this up for a public comment. Uh, remember, you've got three minutes. Uh, please address the pertinent issues here. Personal, we need to be civil and respectful of one another and one another's time. No personal attacks, please. And please do address the commissioners, not the applicants or uh, uh, the audience here today. Any questions on that? Lindsay will be timing us here, and you'll hear the timer like you just heard a minute ago. Uh, first up would be Henry Hoshiko. Please introduce yourself where you live, Mr. Hoshiko.
My name is Henry Hoshiko. I live at three-three-two-zero-seven J eighty Road in Hotchkiss. Uh, several questions I think need to be answered before the permit is approved. The has the town of Hotchkiss been notified of this permit request? And the reason for this is because the the growth management agreement between Hotchkiss and the Delta County. Uh, there is a uh, statement that says any application for subdivision uh, development within the three mil- mile area outside of the Hotchkiss city limits will be submitted to the town for its review. And uh, proposed venue is within three miles of the city limits. Another question is, or is the water being fed into the pond? That is being fed into the pond being uh, that is being proposed from the venue come from? If it is from the runoff water from across the road, that is the J eighty Road, it is illegal to store this water per state water laws. Then the uh, next question is, why is the construction proceeding without the conditional use permit being being approved? And I'd like like to now uh, read a statement from the Delta County Land Land Use Code, Chapter One, Section Two. The interpretation. The right to develop and improve private property does not include the right to physically damage or adversely impact neighboring properties, water resources, or the environment. Or to utilize more than a property owner's fair share of public facilities and resources. Even if that means that the property owner cannot utilize property for its perceived highest and best use. And then the last paragraph is C is zoning provides an efficient and fair way to provide for the orderly use and development of land in the county. Land uses that generate noise, dust, traffic, or other potential offsite impact are directed by this code to certain zoning districts where there are adequate services, including roads, water, wastewater treatment, and disposal. Where offsite impacts may be more effectively uh, absorbed and or mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Diane Hoshiko.
I am Mrs. Hoshiko. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I live at three-three-two-zero-seven J eighty Road. And I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about what the property on three-three oh-eight-four J eighty Road used to look like. I I feel like, you know, you're hearing all this stuff, but maybe you don't know what it used to be like, and I thought maybe I could real quick, fast, in my three minutes, I could tell you that uh, Wes and Carol worked that land and loved it. And it had a plat on it for no development, and I was wondering how that got changed. It doesn't sound real good to me that it got changed because they thought it was always going to remain the same, and they had one of the best alfalfa fields on Rogers Mesa next to mine. But um, I just, I just wanted you to know that they they took care of that place. They had a garden that was immaculate. There were no weeds in it. They grew pumpkins and put them outside and decorated it, and you'd drive by there. You would just go real slow and and see what they were doing. And when you drive by that place now, it almost looks like a gravel pit. I want to cry when I drive by there. And I don't understand how we could allow that to happen to our beautiful agricultural land. I love it here, and it it breaks my heart to drive by there. Really does. So I needed to say that. And then something has come to my attention about that Delta County has uh, an attorney from Denver in addition to our other attorneys. And I was wondering, why would we bring in? And I was wondering, why would we bring in an attorney that's, that's not from here? I mean, are our attorneys, are they, are they too ethical? Do, do we not want our attorneys? We, we should, we should support our attorneys here. That's just my opinion. And then the next thing that's come to my attention is that these been, some of the smaller venues are sort of being bullied. I don't know if I should use the word bully, but they're, they're being asked to do all, make all these changes now and they've, they're little ma and pa operations. And they've, they've been in business here for years and years. And we, we need to keep those people, we love them. And why, why would we try to put some of our other venues out of business and allow something like this to come in? It, it doesn't seem fair to me and it makes me, it makes me sad. I'm an old woman, I'm sorry, but it makes me very sad. And we have one venue, their name is Sageview Ranch, another one Fort Austin. And, and I've been told that there's somebody who's called a, a county code compliance officer and he's like allowed to come out there and threaten them. That's not okay. Last, I'm going to give you Proverbs eleven-one. Mark my words, dishonest scales are an abomination to the Lord. It's true, there is such a thing as divine justice. And what's going on here is not good.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoshiko. Dan Circey, you indicated no. Would you like to speak? Is he in the room?
He's not.
Okay. Lyle Wingard, you also indicated no, would you like to speak? See you in the room. Ron Smith. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ron Smith. I'm at three-two-nine-eight-eight J eighty Road. Um, I've been at that address since two thousand and four. I've been a residence of Delta County since nineteen seventy-eight. I've been farming and ranching and been in business since then. Several points that need to be brought out. Uh, first, there is a natural drainage from the northwest corner to the southeast as it showed on the plans up there. That has been there for years. There is a problem with wastewater on the north side of J eighty Road in the borrowed ditch. I've brought this point out before. You've had the road crew out there twice that I'm aware of. They've seen the problem. They've made, uh, they're aware of it to correct it. It's going to take one of several things. You're going to have to get your engineer out there. They're either going to have to pour it and put it in the natural drainage. Or another thing I'm familiar with is the water laws. I've been on numerous water boards. And once that water leaves my property, the tailwater wastewater is somebody else's responsibility. It's either Mr. Davis or the counties. Hence, it is not being taken care of right now. There's always a puddle or always borrowed ditch, it's always full there. If he fills in that natural drainage, you're not going to have anything on, for flood control to take care of that. Okay. Second, like I said, either bore under there or the county and crew is going to have to replace that culvert and put it at a lower level. I would also ask that it would only seem reasonable for the traffic engineer to put a barrier up where the act, the existing exit from his comes out onto J eighty Road across from my property to divert traffic either so they don't go straight across the road and through my fence. I have had, at least five times, I've had people through my fence there. And this is before we had any of this traffic. And last, I am, the right to farm in Delta County. I am currently loading semis, stock trailers. I'm unloading hay in front of my house on J eighty Road. Who is responsible for me not being able to do that now under Delta County's right to farm? And I will tell you right now, nobody coming off of that, uh, highway ninety-two slows down to thirty-five miles an hour. We're lucky if they hit fifty by the time they hit, uh, or thirty-three-hundred Road hits. So.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Melanie Hoshiko.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Melanie Hoshiko. I live at three-three-one-zero-one J Road. Sorry, my video is not playing.
Ms. Hoshiko, what is it that you were trying to get up here?
I hesitate to play that, but that's construction we've been waking up to at six AM and earlier for many months now, weekends and holidays included. So for the love of all that's decent, please put conditions on construction times. Recordings taken from my yard and not even at the edge of my property. Mr. Davis's planned parking lot is fifty feet from my property and less than three hundred feet from my bedroom window. That's insane. What other recent venue you've been considering has this? None, they are not similar. I can assure you, this is absurdly close proximity and it has a direct negative effect on my family's health and general welfare. Planning and Mr. Davis have misled C dot. The traffic study Ken Davis paid ten thousand dollars for needs to be thrown out. The study is based on forty-eight cars, but by Mr. Davis's own testimony at the last hearing, the reason he will be keeping the parking lot to ninety-three spaces is that there will be more than forty-eight cars. Therefore, the information C dot has is a lie. The only way you can consider the traffic study is to put a condition of forty-eight cars. However, this venue should never be approved. I hope you read Lance's words as one of the few commission members to drive by the site, chapter one, section two, and two B. It's the wrong business for this neighborhood. It fits more with a differently zoned area. If you approve this, you're setting a precedent. You've changed the character and there's no going back. My realtor and buyer's agent we used when buying our house emailed us and said the Davis venue is not a positive thing and will have a negative impact on our property value. Other local real estate agents suggested selling our property to accommodate the commercial venue such as an Airbnb, changing the nature of our neighborhood, less family homes, declining student enrollment. You tell me how this protects the character of our existing rural community. I also hope you've read all of our evidence of how drunk drivers can't navigate our particular county roads. Don't make the mistake like Sean Gardner and Skip Hudson did of disregarding the problem of the Davis open bar model. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russ Christensen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is difficult. Um, I've just seen a lot of pain over these event issues. Um, you know, the Hawk Ranch hearing, everything else, my life, Davis's life. I hate seeing this happen in our community, I really do. It's a very divisive issue. And it's not bringing out the best in us. And I, I think what I'll point to and Attorney Barrett, I, of note, uh, to you is, um, I think it, it got humanized for me a little bit after the Hawk hearing when planning commission and the planning department stayed on, on record. It was just myself, Tina from Chopper, and Ryan, an attorney from Montrose, and talked about the arbitrary and capricious nature of the land use code when applied to it. It was twenty-minute discussion of how they don't know what to apply, that they need, um, perhaps a moratorium like Montrose until they have workshops and that the land use code, they don't know how to apply conditions. There are no guidelines, these are random, and it's playing out in the applications. Proc is a limited use permit that has now come back to you three or four times to get what they want in the application. That's troublesome. This was supposed to be an LUP. I was told this day for us would never come. And I've spent seven months of intense effort, even working with other venue owners just to get this opportunity and I get three minutes. Um, that, that's really hard. That's my house, Melanie and I's house. I would like to argue and my counsel will argue as we, if this gets approved, that the parking lot, these distances are not accurate. The parking lot in that gazebo are part of the commercial development and the distance lines should be measured from that. If Mr. Davis will not reduce the size of the parking lot, he has a, a required and intended use for that that is related to the events and the venue. He may host people throwing rice in there. My problem is two, I don't, barn's going to be beautiful. I agree with that. My problem is character of neighbor is two hundred or was two hundred, it changes every week. It's now a hundred and twenty people. That proximal to my property fifty times a year, that's every weekend. I'm leaving this meeting today to travel to Craig Steamboat, Edwards, Denver. I work sixty hours a week, employ a lot of people to do business with a lot of great companies out here, Stedman Clinic, Bale Health, almost every county, city of Delta, trying not to piss anybody off. Delta PD uses my IT, you know, our company's stuff. I, I'm just, I'm so torn. I guess what I'm saying is one of these things is not like the other. And, and it, there needs to be judgment because one bad proprietor and one bad location will ruin the opportunity for this type of development across the entire county. And right now, these arbitrary and capricious guidelines, admittedly so, it's on record now. Um, they don't know how to apply. Land use code's a little broken when it comes to this.
You want to summarize, Mr. Christensen?
Yeah, well, the planning department's really trying to address. I've been really critical of Sean Gardner, probably too much so. But I, I told him like a man I was going to do that because I'm defending my home and my wife breaking down every day. And I'm a strong guy, I've come at everybody very hard. I cannot even, this, this, I have a great real estate agent, it's a no doubter. My property value is going down a hundred percent because of this. It, you can see where it is. And the other part, real quick summary?
Real quick.
And some humor to it all. Thank you guys for everything you do. It's very difficult. I do appreciate, I negotiate stuff all the time and it's, it's hard. The higher good is at stake here and you just, I'm, you know, please wisdom and wisdom in the right direction for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Uh, Ms. Valerie Stucker.
Good morning. Good morning, my name is Valerie Stucker. My address is three-three-one-eight-eight J Road. Um, looking at the land, land use code, um, this does not protect the character of the community. A couple of the planning commissioners said the same. Um, this is a commercial venture in a rural community. It's the only one. It's all commune, it's all rural residences. This is the only commercial venture. So it is not the character of that area. That's pretty clear in the land use code. As far as property values, um, being speculation that they will be less. If I'm going to look at a new home and I know that there's going to be a party venue that close, I'm not going to purchase that home. It's a no-brainer that that is going to negatively affect property values. Uh, I have some questions. Does the county have resources for enforcement for these conditions? Who do I call if the barn doors are not closed at seven PM? Because those barn doors being open directly amplifies all the sound right to my home, right to where I am and my children are sleeping. Who keeps the decibel log? Is that an honor system? Are we going to have the owners of the, the venue keeping that log? Is that, uh, how are we going to keep that honest? Um, Ron Smith has already highlighted existing problems with the drainage and the traffic um, that have not been addressed by the county. And we're proposing adding more traffic and use to that area. And is that going to be a good idea? That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Austin, you said you're a potential.
No comment.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Veronica Teal, I don't understand the Seroni thing.
Ronnie.
Oh, Ronnie, thank you.
I'm coming with the board, not a three-inch. Melanie, can you come over this way? For the baby's interest, can you hold that?
Please remember to introduce yourself and where you live.
I will, sir. I would like to have these handed up to the commissioners, please. One, have good two, have good three. And if you guys will take a look at this picture and share it amongst you, we'll address that as well. My name is Veronica Teal, one-zero-zero-two-four-thirty-three-hundred Road in Hotchkiss. We are a family of three. We served in the Navy for twenty years, came back to a peaceful rural neighborhood and now it's being disrupted. Uh, some of the things, since I'm on a three-minute, I definitely want to bring up, uh, J eighty Road determination. The two parties, meaning C dot and county, agreed to allow the intersection of State Highway ninety-two and J eighty Road to be a right-in-only configuration. All outbound vehicle movements and inbound left turn movements will not be allowed. This study evaluates the interfa, in, intersection configuration. Would you please let me know what Catherine Davis at thirty-two-nine-twenty-six J Road, Philip and Constance Wilson at three-two-nine-six-two Highway ninety-two, and Ron and Karen Smith at three-two-nine-eight-eight J Road are supposed to gain legal access to their property? If they cannot make a left turn or if they cannot make a right turn off of thirty-three-hundred because that is now a one-way entrance, they cannot receive, they cannot get to their legally owned property. Let me know how far or let them know how far they have to drive up Highway ninety-two if they are coming from their business in Hotchkiss, i.e. the post office or the grocery store. How far they need to drive up Highway ninety-two before they can turn around so that they can come back into their home? The traffic port report, I have some inconsistencies with. Um, it's based on information that was provided by Skip, funded by Ken, who I will further call the applicant. I consider it incomplete and biased. To resolve this issue and uphold the code of ethic, ethics and conduct an independent consultant an independent consultant hired by the county and paid for by the applicant should conduct a new report. While Skip Hudson's skill and experience are not in doubt, his job was to make the numbers work to the applicant's advantage. The applicant circulated a petition falsely claiming that J-80 road would be closed unless he got signatures. He admitted to this and had received what he claims as 90 signatures. We have no record of that petition ever having been filed. This unduly influenced Skip Hudson with selection bias. Consequently, it's been suggested that a turn lane be completed at J-80, making it a single entrance, rather than purchasing to create a turn excel-decel lane on 3300 Road. No other routes were reviewed and presented. My role is to show you just cause to support this and request the application be denied. I am so sorry. I am continuing because I've been squelched too long.
I'm gonna have you summarize, ma'am, please.
According to the Hodgkins master plan, there's two major arterial highways, 92 and 133, which should be considered. They were not. 133 was never considered. The report assumes drivers will go directly to the event without checking into their I don't know about you, but I always want to go in, check in, change clothes, and then go to an event, and at least I can go back home. The most, the subdivisions within 25 miles, there are 12 hotels, Airbnbs, and two RV parks located mostly in Hodgkins and Peonia. That puts people on this, or this road. Anybody familiar with Cemetery Hill? It's also known as Riverside, J-80 Riverside. Now you can look at that one picture that I sent for you to share.
Ma'am, I need some.
I'm sorry. I, there's just too many inconsistencies. Okay. That picture that you have shows Cemetery Hill. The elevation drops on that hill are mostly 60 degrees by GIS reports. That is not a safe road for people to be traveling that are unfamiliar with the road. The road also becomes narrow. It is unsafe. It is our responsibility, God-given responsibility, to watch out for our fellow man. We should not allow this venue by any means. And my final thoughts. Historically, communities have fought to protect their land traditions and ways of life. Many residents in Hodgkins have deep roots with ties of the founders and several generations back. This history fosters a sense of safety and continuity, which is threatened by external influences. Today, we seek to maintain our social comfort and security through government channels. With all respect, I plead to you, the Board of Commissioners, deny this application for this venue at 33084 J Road, parcel 324136203004. This venue needs to be in a Zone RC1, not a A20. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Did anybody else in the room would like to speak that did not get the opportunity to sign in?
I'd sign down if I might to speak.
Okay. Mrs. Sorensen, please restate your name and where you live, please.
My name is Cindy Sorensen. I'm owner of Zenzin Gardens. My address is 124983790 Road. First of all, page 21, section 2.81B, 2004, to protect the character of rural communities. So, we have a community, we have a new venue coming in that is brand-new. They're not from the county. They've been in the county for six months, and they're putting up a huge venue. You have other small venues already existing in the county and are being harassed by our inspector, Mr. Everett Neal. On our conversation that we had on the phone, you spoke that Mike Lane has a conflict of interest, and that he has recused himself from participating in voting. My question is, you guys all work together. Are you guys standing integrity in your integrity? Are you supporting the agritourism of Delta County? Mike Lane, just five minutes after the last meeting that ended at 9:20, sent me an email, not email, a Facebook request as a friend. I think this is kind of interesting. I feel like there's, there's dishonesty happening here with our county commissioners. And I'm looking, I'm asking you guys to stand in your integrity. Mr. Coontz?
Please address.
I am. I am. I am. So, what are we going to do? Are we gonna do the right thing? Are we gonna harass the businesses that have been supporting our community for the last 10, 12 years and support a brand-new venue? Is that what, is that what Delta County's about? Is not supporting our neighbors? Is just pushing something through because somebody is benefiting financially? I think that this is wrong, and I'm speaking up. And I'm not turning my head. You can harass me all you want. You can harass the other venues all you want. We're not going away. So do the right thing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Sorensen. Anybody else in the room? Lindsay, anybody online would like to address the commissioners?
Is there anyone online? Yes, sir.
Very good. We're gonna close the public hearing. Part, thank you, everybody who took the time and the effort to address the commissioners this morning. I'm gonna ask the applicants to come forward again, please. You heard a number of issues brought forward. For the commissioners, ask any questions here? Is there anything you'd like to add?
If I could, I did make notes as people were speaking, and there was some, some things that I could address that made, you would probably be asking questions. When we bought the property, we did make it well-known to everyone that would listen to us that what we wanted to do. The daughter of Mr. Spoor that sold us the property, she wished us well. She approved. She thought we were doing-
Let's address pertinent issues, okay?
Other venues were bullied. I just wanted to make it known that when we were being required by CDOT to have a turn lane, we said, well, what about all the other venues? Why don't you give us the same courtesy that you're giving them? You're making us do a turn lane when they weren't required to. So, apparently, they didn't go through the channels that we went through from the beginning, and that's how that came about. We weren't complaining against the other venues. We were complaining that we weren't having the same courtesy from CDOT. That's very important for me to get out. The wastewater, I talked to the county on that. They were out there. Russ and I were both out there at the corner talking to them. The way I understood it is if I put my one-foot diameter pipe the same height as a pipe going under the road, and it was draining, everything was good. We had a recent visit about a month ago. He said, it's just not working. It's still backing up over there. What we need to have happen is the water needs to fall out of the pipe, and then I can route it however I want. So in this last week, I did pour another cement box, distribution box, with another pipe a foot lower. So the top of my pipe now is lower than the pipe coming under the road, the, the culvert. I left the other pipe there for an overflow drainage, but I can't, I can't knock a hole through the two boxes until the water stops flowing in the fall. So that will happen, but I did everything I could at this point to take care of that. My starting times in the morning is set by the state, sunup to sundown. In the past, I did start at 5:30. I did get a call from one of the neighbors saying I'm starting way too early. So I, I found out when the starting times were allowed, and I wait until 6 o'clock. The size of the parking lot, the state says you can allow 2.5 people per car for the park, or for arriving to the venue. That doesn't mean every time two and a half people are gonna get out of each car. If we have 120 max on the people showing up, and they, they all bring their own car, we aren't gonna have a big enough parking lot. So basically, I figure it's better to have a bigger parking lot.
You have three minutes, just so you know.
And not use, okay? Basically, there are a lot of other commercial ventures in the area. There's a dog kennel, Bullinger and Queen is there. Everyone farming, they also are in business. This isn't the only business in the neighborhood. 3300 Road will not be a one-way street. CDOT has given careful consideration how they want this to be, and that's the way it's gonna be. We can't change their mind. We were able to have this petition. We met a number of the neighbors. It didn't go well toward the end, but we did get about 90 signatures, and that swayed CDOT just enough that they said, okay, maybe we do want J-80 to stay open as an exit. But they wouldn't allow it to be kept there for entering.
We are now four minutes.
Mrs. Sorensen, I'm allowing, allowing the applicant-
It has to be fair to everybody.
Hey, this is our meeting now. Public comments over. Thank you.
And the last thing was, everything is getting so overblown. This isn't gonna be happening every day. If we're lucky, it could happen once a week for a few hours in the evening. Chances are, it won't. There's times of the year people just don't wanna have their wedding. So, that's all I really had.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any questions for the applicant today?
I want for the applicant.
Mr. Lane?
I get an equal-time request, just to respond to a couple of things that have been stated. Even for two minutes?
No.
I have no question.
All right. Thanks.
Mr. Bear, Mr. Gardner, do you have anything else to add to the discussion today?
Just in response to a couple of comments in public, the town of Hodgkins was provided a referral letter. We have a copy of the email, emails that presented them with the referral packet. And another point is that we also have an email from Luke Reski regarding the pond, and there are no concerns or problems with it.
What about one constituent brought up that there's no development? Did you come across any wording in any of the plans?
Yeah. This project did go before your board to remove the plat restriction. They had no further development, or it was like one single-family residence. We did take it to you, and you did approve that free plan to remove that restriction. Which did have the other lot owner in that subdivision sign off on the plat in agreements removing that plat restriction.
The restriction was for another family residence. It didn't really say anything about a venue or anything of that sort. It was for a family residence, not more than one family residence.
Anything else, Mr. Lane?
16 conditions. You feel comfortable and agree with all of those?
Yeah, some of those were actually some that we proposed.
Mr. and Mrs. Davis's applicants for this, you understand that their neighbors have some very valid concerns about noise?
We do.
And other issues here. And complying with, if this was to be approved, complying with all these conditions, it's gonna take a lot of management on your part if this is approved.
Well, we, we figure posting a decimeter at the appropriate places should pretty much take care of that.
The windows will be closed and the doors at the barn. We live right on property, so we can supervise.
Anything else for the applicants?
I guess my only comments would be, there are these 16 conditions that you guys are being asked to consider here, and a couple of them are gonna be rather expensive to take care of. I assume you understand that. There's been a lot of comment today about noise and traffic and water and, and all those kinds of things. And there's just a lot of, a lot of information here in this report. This is above and beyond. There's just a lot here. I, for one, feel like I just need a little more time to kind of soak through this stuff and figure it all out. So my recommendation today would be to table this until next month. Just give us a little more time to, to work through it. Ask some of these questions in regards to the noise, you know, where exactly is that, that decimeter gonna be? Just the water issues, things that, there's just enough questions here that remain unanswered, that I don't feel comfortable stepping into this right now. So if, if you guys are in agreement, I would like to make a motion that we table this until next month. Have a little more time to go through some of this stuff, ask some different questions maybe we haven't come up with yet, and just be able to, when we make this, make it work for everybody. I mean, nobody's gonna be happy completely once the decisions are made. We understand that. But we have to do our, our best to try to mitigate as many as, ahead of time as we can.
Mike, there's a motion on the floor.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Bear.
You'll need to deal with that. But I will point out to the board on proposed condition number 16, there's a parenthetical that says, there's no hard liquor, then it's a parenthetical that says 20% or more proof. That's, that's inconsistent, in the sense that you're either talking proof or you're talking percent. They're different things. They're half of one another, right? So I think, I don't know what is intended by that. You're either 20% alcohol, it could be 40% or something else. I don't know what's meant by that, but I would ask that-
It's supposed to be like a tavern license, beer and wine.
I, I don't know what it's supposed to be, but-
That's what I heard from Mr. Gardner.
Okay. So I think that needs to be clarified regardless, well, if you get to that point.
Mike, I'd agree with Commissioner Fuller, and I'd like to table this and give us some time to review all the information that came forward today. What do you think?
It's fine to table it.
We'll need a second.
I'll second the motion to table it until next month.
Does that mean construction continues?
Who asked the question?
Ms. Sorensen.
That is up to the applicant. That is the risk they take on. If this is not approved, that's the risk they took.
Sure, I'd recognize, I'd recommend abling to a specific date.
I'm looking at-
It looked like your regular scheduled dates are the 5th and the 19th.
We're gonna do it to the 19th. Make sure we have a full board.
That worked for you?
Worked. So we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done. We're going to take a three-minute comfort break back for one more planning item. Thank Okay, let's get him in here. Good morning, Mr. Jen. Feel free to join us at the front. Good morning, Mr. Jenks. Feel free to join us at the front.
Right, the next item on the list, and, uh, Carrie will show up here in a minute, but is, uh, an RFP 2024, RFP 23, information possible award, uh, in tally, 2025 RFP 17, land use permit and system. Uh, where begin? Let's see, um. We were awarded, uh, recently, uh, a grant from DOLA. It's a local planning capacity grant for 115,000. It's an 80/20 split between DOLA and county. Some of that money, we used, um, to contract this, the services of Propeller. It's an organization that helped us, um, apply for another grant with the State Internet Portal Authority, uh, to, to fund the acquisition and development of a permit management system. And we were awarded that grant, well, that grant's committed to us. We haven't been awarded it until we declare what our choice in software is gonna be. That grant's for 171,000 dollars to cover the expenses of set, you know, in, getting the license to a software and getting it set up. We, uh, we also have another projects for ADUs. Some of that money is for that, and then what's gonna be left over in that LPC grant is gonna be approximately 60,000 dollars. And together with the SIPA grant, the 60,000 and the LPC grant, that's the funding that's available for us to finance the acquisition of software. In our RFP that we put out for the software bids, these were some of the requirements that we requested. Um, we had a set of GIS requirements, automated workflow and tracking, interoperability with other software that we use in other departments in the county. We asked for legacy data migration and consolidation. Uh, we wanted to be cloud-based, scalable platform, audit trails and immutable records. That's all that, all that stuff we asked for, okay? Just to give you an idea of what we're requesting. So the bids we got, you know, we respond to all of these requests. We got a total of seven bids. I only included the bid tally in your packet. That was kind of all I had prepared at the time. Um, of the seven bids, one was not qualified. They didn't submit the right kind of form, so they're disqualified on submission. And two others were eliminated right off the bat, just because they didn't meet requirements. Or as well as the others.
And that's the bidders one, two, and three?
It's FSH, yeah, I think so, in the vitality.
Yes.
Correct, yeah. So FSH, two of the bids. And then GCS were the ones that were eliminated. And then that, so that reduced it down to four for us to concentrate on. In, considering the remaining four bids, um, we looked at these four criteria primarily. In the bid, we had asked for vendors to provide information or verification that they also had an asset management, um, offering, a module. Forgive me, but, you know, I'm speaking at the limits of my understanding of what I'm talking.
Keep going here, you're good.
Okay, but permit management system, I mean, we're talking about application forms for access and address, for all kinds of land use permits, subdivisions, for septic system permits. That's the kind of stuff we're talking about. All this stuff is tied to data that's on GIS. You know, when an applicant comes in to apply, we want what's their property information on the database on GIS to populate into that application. So GIS is really, really the database that's holding all the information about the property. And subsequently, after they go through the application process, the information that changes about their property is gonna go back into the GIS deck, right? So, additionally, we have road and bridge and engineering also use GIS information for, you know, roads and bridges and other assets that the county manages. And that's all information that's also related to GIS. So it is important to us that whatever software we're gonna choose for the permit management system also has the capability of handling asset management. So therefore, all of our, um, all of our bids provided, you know, at least some form of affirmation, they have asset management capability. And most of them provided some, um, some numbers around what that also would cost. So, we, we wanted to consider them as a whole. Though our focus is right now having a permit management system, we, we wanted to also look at the asset management capability and its cost. One of the vendors, and it's the one that we are gonna recommend, is that we prefer Novotics. Their system is a little different, and it works a little differently. But essentially, when, if we were to buy a permit management system from them, we in essence also acquired an asset management system. And so, it was incumbent upon us to compare apples to apples, to look at the whole picture in that way, in terms of upfront cost and annual cost for, um, all the competing vendors. So this here gives you kind of a, a breakdown here on the integrations of permit management side. For Novotics, they are very high at the upfront cost. And, you know, somewhat competitive in annual cost for permit management. But when you throw in the asset management picture, they look a lot better. So, this is presuming that at some time in the near future, next year or two, road and bridge and, and county engineering would want to, uh, transition out of PubWorks, which they use right now at about, I think it's like 6,000 a year, the license fee is. It's inexpensive, but it's very ineffective. It's inefficient, they're not, it's not working in many respects. I mean, I can let them comment on all, you know, um, its problems, but I've heard about them, and, you know, they, they have the intention to, to try and transition it sometime in the future. That's why we had asked, will this be a part of the proposal? Um, when you include in the upfront cost and annual cost for asset management system, Novotics comes out comparatively a lot better. But, I, that, I don't know, do these numbers kinda make sense to you? I'll let you kinda look at that table.
Yeah, I like five-year average on this.
Yeah. Because most of them increased their annual fees, you know, um, by a certain percentage. Uh, Tyler doesn't. They, they stuck with their same annual fee over the five years, but the others increased by 5%, and you know, by 3%.
You never buy software, you just rent it.
So looking at the, the five-year total, uh, of the combined, you know, permit and asset management, you know, um, the Vodics is really, uh, competitive. PSD Citywide, um, does beat them on cost. But when you look at annual cost, for permit management is 25.5, and for asset management is 25.5. Whereas, and, and then, you know, that comes out the total of 51,000 a year if we were to have both systems. But again, we're not looking at getting the asset management for probably a year or two. With Novotics, we buy the permanent management system, we get the asset management system with it. So, um, do you have any questions about that at this point?
I do. One of the things PubWorks does is.
I wanna be careful, um. You know, it would be pre-decisional to say we are moving off of PubWorks. Uh, this, uh, RFP said asset management, um, would definitely be part of the package. And so, you know, there has been no decision made regarding, regarding PubWorks.
Well, Novotics do payroll, like calculate labor hours.
I'm not prepared to answer that. I think it does.
Yeah. It assigns, when, when you read through what they are proposing, it would, you would input the actual hourly cost, and it has that ability similar to PubWorks where you assign it to the job. If it's Fruitland Mesa Road, you assign it to the job, so it has that same capability. Yeah.
As a, is there any references for Novotics, has other counties or entities used this, and what do they think?
We, with all of these four, we did demos, and we also interviewed customers. So we interviewed, Carrie interviewed one customer herself, and then we interviewed as a team, um, another customer in Hawaii. And they had very glowing reports. I mean, in Hawaii's case, they actually have, uh, so many layers of regulations, being the island in Hawaii and lots of environmental protections and so forth, that they really benefited from the customizability of Novotics in their use. So, had a lot of flexibility there. But, nobody necessarily really local, nor did we interview anybody that was really, um, exactly comparable to like a county in the way that we were wanting to use the software. Do you have anything further to say about that, Carrie?
No, um, they gave three references. I looked on all three references. I looked at their sites of how they were using the software and dug into it. I called all of the three references, divided. And it's, you know, there are notable customers in Colorado that they provided also. Um, I talked to one other firm and one of our group, had a group meeting review with the one that, um, with the one in Hawaii. Um, was talking about it, so. They all had a good, good, um, feedback, um, and were also willing, willingly told us, you know, like any negative or undesirable that they felt like they experienced. But, there wasn't, there wasn't really, they all seemed pretty, of what they chose.
Who would be your second choice?
PSD Citywide, I think. The others are, are somewhat out of the money a little bit, um, over time. They get pretty expensive quick. I mean, Tyler, in, in our, in our discussions with them after the demo, um, you know, I had a couple of email exchanges, and I just shared that, you know, their, their original proposal, um, included, uh, per user cost, which really made it complex to figure out, like, how much was it really gonna cost us to, internal review agencies have to have user licenses, you know, how many employees are we gonna be counting here? And, um, and then they also required a, a use of Bluebeam for us to do like plat reviews within the program. It just gave us a lot of mental work to do to try to figure out, like, where is the money really gonna end, you know, with them? And they were, they were a higher cost bidder. But they did come back and said we could do an enterprise license, basically, let everybody that we need to use it be on one license. But it didn't really substantially change the cost.
Robby, what do you think?
Well, Carrie's done the hard lift on a lot of this for the last time that we actually put this RFP out, and again this time. And has really dug into that GIS interface that we desperately need for not only the applications, but, you know, the asset management is, as well. Whether it be the culverts or anything like that. So, I'm in agreement with what the staff recommendation is. With this, realizing that, um, again, as you said, all of this software is expensive.
I got a couple more slides to, 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 to the viewpoints. So, our, our final recommendation is Novotics, because it meets all the requirements. It provides this superior GIS integration. The, the other software providers, again, I'm gonna speak in third-grade terms that I understand, they basically make a copy every day of our database from GIS. And then sync, you know, and they, they sync it every day. And there's, it's subject to some errors that can occur in that process. And Novotics has something of a real-time connection coming on with GIS. So that really reduces or eliminates that kind of syncing, uh, error problem and risk. Also, they have a, um, Esri Gold member partnership, which is important to GIS, so that they know that if they want to get to a newer version of, uh, of GIS, of Esri GIS, but we'll help you out here.
Well, yeah, so we have, you know, as we do updates, and Esri is always updating, um, and decommissioning software, we wanna make sure that the product that we choose continues to keep up with those updates and also has opportunity to make comments back to Esri about how those updates happen, how do they happen, or what is happening in those days. So that's what the gold partnership gives us.
We get some, um, you know, certainty that we're not gonna get version locked with them. You know, if we upgrade to a higher version and then the software provider doesn't, if there's any disparity there that could cause problems, we wouldn't have it on the bottoms. It wasn't, it wasn't sought after, it wasn't in the proposal, but if we were to go with the Vodics, we have asset management, right, available to us to configure into data migrate and start using if we, at any time we would like. Don't have to purchase another module and, and do that. We would have to, of course, clean up all our data and migrate it over. Um, and this was a point that kinda came up in conversation with Matt. I mean, uh, we do have substantial grant funding available for this. If we were to go with PSD Citywide, um, we wouldn't really be utilizing the full amount that's, that's available. And this will utilize all the full amount that's available, uh, plus a little if you go to this stuff. This is, I think, how it will break down based upon, uh, the bid, uh, from Novotics. It would be at 245,000 total. It seems insane to me, but that's what it is. And the, um, funding, uh, one, for one-time cost, we have available is 171 from the SIPA grant. We're in conversation with DOLA right now. We have to, the, we have to put in a budget line adjustment request uh, for that remainder amount after we pay off the other consultants that we already contracted with. And, um, that has to be approved, and we have to get that approval before we can commence all work for, you know. They said we could contract, they would contract our own risk. If they didn't approve it, then we would be contracted, we would have, you know, their, their funding approved. But once it's approved, we can begin work. They just don't want any invoices, uh, for work that began before their approval.
What's turnaround time on that, Pat?
I think it'd be up to eight weeks. Probably a lot, much less than that, but they've let us know the three-day weeks.
Lastly, um, this is kind of, yes, for the timeline is here. This is a rough timeline of how this could roll out. So, funding, it would take us up to, you know, through August to, you know, do the amend, amend the LPC grant. Uh, then it would take the month of September to work through contracting. You wanna be careful, make sure you get, get on track, get terms. A good project management plan to go with that, and how we're gonna lay out the, the payments. And then, um, there, then, then it just follows basically what's in Novotics' proposal for project planning, system design, configuration, go-live preparation, so forth, with a go-live acceptance date of, uh, you know, August next year.
Carrie, is that a reasonable timeline for you in your department?
Yes. Yeah, I think that, um, it even seems a bit, it could be, I don't know, it could be, end up being short than that, but I think that that should get us there.
It puts the front of the work too, in the wintertime, when things slow a bit for us. I think so, that'd be nice.
And this is just for the permanent management, not for converting? And this is just for the permit, not for converting of Pub Works.
Yep.
Which Novartis has done, they have taken Pub Works customers before, moved them into their systems.
Questions for Sean or Kerry or Matt?
Your first choice would be Novartis, second choice would be PSD?
PSD.
Yeah, and I mean, this would be conditioned upon the approval of DOLA to use those remaining funds to fund the remainder after the SIPA grant. I mean, we just don't want to proceed until we have that law, I think.
So the action in front of the commissioners today is to select a bidder and if we do make it conditional upon receiving the additional DOLA grant? Is that correct?
Yes, and that request for a budget line adjustment will have to be, I think, signed by Commissioner Lane. Didn't you sign that before, I think?
I think so.
I don't know, it'll have to be one of you that will sign for that. But we're working on writing that right now, that request.
Well, I move that we approve the bid for the system to Novat.
Let's reference the RFP number.
Yes, Novat's LLC bidder number five. And the RFP is twenty twenty-five RFP dash seventeen. And conditional upon receiving the grant from DOLA for partial payment of this.
Any other addition, is that it? Anything, Matt?
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do plug us in at the right time, let us know on the DOLA grant certainly. But we would like to see some demos of this as you guys get rolling along, so we understand the public interface.
Okay.
You guys are subject matter experts, but we need to be aware of how it's working. Anything else come for the commissioners this morning?
I have none.
John?
Nothing further to say, okay.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate you guys and all your hard work, what you're doing here. We're going to stand adjourned.